It's okay. Please stand for a prayer.
Dear Heavenly Father, we give you thanks for our many blessings and freedoms that we so much enjoy. During this most joyous time of year, we ask for a special prayer for our loved ones, men and women in uniform. We ask that you walk with them, protect them, as you keep us safe and free. And we ask for your wisdom and guidance this evening as we deliberate. And then we ask for safety and really a special prayer for our neighbors in Germany this evening. For all these blessings, in your son's name, amen.
Pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you very much. We do have a quorum this evening. Thank you for the commissioners. Planning update?
I have a couple of announcements. The first is related to a community meeting that we received notice of. It's for a proposed rezoning for a apartment, or excuse me, a townhouse complex called Lee's Crest. It's proposed to be 128 townhomes. And the property is located on the north side of Mine Road, just to the east of the Wawa at Falcon Drive. The community meeting is Thursday, January 5th at 7:00 PM at Spotswood Elementary School. And this project is located in the Battlefield Voting District.
Thank you. Is that it?
The second item is just to inform you that your disclosures are in your places this evening. These are the annual real estate disclosures. Please do turn these in as quickly as possible. If you can bring them to the meeting on January 4th, Paulette will be collecting them to turn them in by the 6th. So please do keep that in mind. There is a fee instituted this year for not turning them in in a timely manner.
Who voted on that?
Well, I don't know. This is a state requirement, so that came down from the state.
A $250 fee?
If they're late. If they're late.
No, still. Still. Have to talk with the governor about that. Moving right along, I trust everybody's had a chance to review the minutes of the last meeting. If there are no comments, I'll take a motion on it.
Move for approval.
I'll call the vote. Thank you very much. Motion passes. Moving on to review and approval of Platt X-16-001.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a request for an exception to the five-to-one ratio rule. The property is located at 3750 Brick Knock Road in the Berkeley Voting District. Staff is recommending approval of the exception. The project, or the property you can see before you in yellow outlined in blue, this parcel is proposed to be divided roughly in half, as you can see here, resulting in a length that is approximately seven times the width for each of the parcels. So of course, that being greater than the five-to-one rule that's in the subdivision ordinance. This is located in Article 5 of the ordinance, so the planning commission is able to grant an exception. The applicant did provide a justification in the packet. This configuration will not be out of keeping with properties in the area. In fact, it will be, continue to be larger than many of them. And it will maintain the required, for a conventional subdivision, the required road frontage, so you will not have a situation where there are multiple driveways hitting the public road in a very short space. So staff is recommending approval.
Yeah, if there are no questions or comments, I'll take a motion on this application.
Oh, Berkeley. Oh, Berkeley.
Mr. Mayor, do you want to make a motion?
So moved for approval.
Second.
Call the vote. Motion passes. Thank you, Wanda. Moving on to public hearing, Special Use Permit 16-006.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. For the record, Patrick White, Spotsmanee County Planning Department. I'm waiting for the PowerPoint to load. This first, this is the first of three cases I'll be bringing before you tonight. This case is SUP 16-6. The applicant's Auto's Director Fredericksburg requests a special use approval for a vehicle sale, rental, and ancillary service establishment on a property within the former Mill Garden Plaza planned unit development. The proposal includes the conversion of an existing restaurant to a 3,907 square foot sales office. There'll be room on site for the outdoor display of 24 vehicles. There are no additional improvements proposed. The property is located at 10-421 Courthouse Road. It is tax parcel 35A19F and is owned by Bivio LLC. Staff is recommending approval with conditions. Here is an aerial of the subject site. It is at the southwest corner of the intersection of Courthouse Road and Levels Road. It is within the Salem Voting District. A right-in, right-out is available on Courthouse Road and two are available on Levels Road. The subject property is a future land use designation of low-density residential and is zoned R1 residential with a Mill Garden Plaza PUD. It is also located in the primary development boundary, the airport overlay district, and the highway corridor overlay district. It's been used commercially since the late '70s, early '80s, when it was developed pursuant to the Mill Garden Plaza PUD, which allowed C1 and C2 uses for properties adjacent to Courthouse Road. That PUD was created in the late, excuse me, late '70s, early '80s as a special use district. It allowed a mix of commercial development along Courthouse Road and mostly residential behind. The commercial development allowed was pursuant to C1 and C2 uses, and this is common along that section of Courthouse Road, where you'll find now restaurants, banks, car washes, et cetera. Although the area was rezoned in intervening years, the land within this PUD retains its legal right to C1 and C2 permitted and special uses. This aerial is a zoomed-in version of the site. It shows the access points. You'll see this one here on Courthouse and these two on Levels, all three with right-in, right-outs, and the existing sidewalk along Levels Road, which wraps to the corner of Levels and Courthouse Road. Staff is recommending the removal of one of these access points, particularly it's this northern one closest to the intersection, and the continuation of that sidewalk to run along Courthouse Road. The applicant desires to operate the facility as-is without making any of these improvements. So we, staff has also recommended two other conditions regarding signage on the site, as noted in your staff report. This is a depiction or a GDP of the subject site. You see the right-in, right-outs. You'll see the just under 4,000 square foot vehicle sales office and 24 open display areas for auto vehicle sales. There, you can also see the established landscaping lines along the northern frontage and the frontage along Levels Road, which the applicant has noted they will keep and maintain, but does not propose any additional plannings. Staff reviewed this case in accordance with the comprehensive plan and the special use requirements and found that the proposal should increase the tax base. It returns a vacant light, excuse me, a vacant site to use. It does have two existing access points on Levels and a third on Courthouse, in accordance with the recommendations of VDOT and county traffic and transportation staff. We are recommending one of those be closed. It does meet the special use standards of review and does meet, excuse me, and is generally consistent with the policy of the comprehensive plan. So we're recommending approval with a few conditions. One of which is that they extend that sidewalk along Courthouse Road. The second is that they close the northernmost right-in, right-out on Levels Road. The next one being that any electronic signage, such as LED signage, should have the capability to auto dim and be no brighter than .3-foot candles above ambient lighting conditions. That's from the International Sign Association's recommended treatment of these LED signs. And lastly, that should the applicant, that temporary signage like the banners and the Sail Blade signs is prohibited except for during special events. This event signage can be permanent to six times a year for a duration not to exceed one week per event, and that conditions, the intent there is to just not have a wildly signed property. The applicant did previously indicate that they were receptive to these last two conditions, but not closing the access and not installing the sidewalk. At this point, I'll stand by for your questions. I know the applicant is present and would likely like to speak.
Can you go back to the site plan and show me again where the sidewalk, where you want to extend the sidewalk?
Along the frontage of the property, sir. So it would bump in into the, into the site, not, excuse me, not into the site, but with VDOT's approval, it would run alongside this, this area here.
But there are no other sidewalks anywhere else along that corridor?
No, no, there are not.
Why are we, why are we asking them to do that?
There is, we are asking them to do that because we pursue the extension of our sidewalk network for all of our projects.
Very good. And the, and the two entrances on, is it Levels?
Yes, sir.
Those are both right-in, right-out?
They are.
And why are we asking them to get rid of one of those entrances?
It's due to a potential conflict from vehicles coming through this right turn here. As vehicles make this right turn and are accelerating through, there are, there's a potential conflict for other vehicles that could be looking to slow down in that same lane to turn into the site. So we believe it'll be safer if that entrance were closed and the applicant would still have access at the southernmost entrance.
It's the merge that is the, it's the weave. It's the weave that's the issue there. Okay.
Patrick, going back to that, how long has that, that been like that, those two entrances on Levels?
I am not 100% sure, but I imagine that it's been that way since they originally developed the site in the late '70s, early '80s.
Right. Back when the restaurant was there, was, looking in the report, it was approximately 360 vehicles a day?
Correct.
And now we're looking at only 106?
We are.
Or 160?
We are looking at less, yeah.
106. So it'd be less traffic going, coming in now there now?
True.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Patrick? At this point, we can hear from the applicant.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Bruce Reese. I'm with Legacy Engineering, and I'm here to represent the potential tenant for the property. Happy holidays and Merry Christmas. Let's hope we can get out of here quickly and get home. We completely agree with the staff report. It was well done. We met with staff. We've agreed with everything that they suggested, with the exception of that condition number one. And that, we believe, is an owner's burden. And I think you've kind of touched on why we think there may be issues associated with that. The good news is there's a protected right turn lane for both of those right-in, right-outs on Levels. In that way, since VDOT allowed that to be constructed many, many years ago. The other issue is the sidewalk, and I think the problem with that sidewalk is not that it's not eventually going to be necessary at some point in time, possibly. It's the cost to establish that sidewalk at this point. If it were being constructed when the road was constructed, cost of that sidewalk is $15 a linear foot. Now, to go back and try to construct that sidewalk in its current condition and the state that that road is in right now would increase that cost exponentially. So we have problems with trying to accommodate something that maybe should have been accommodated when that road was originally widened. With that, I'm here to answer any questions, but I would like to have the owner of the property come up and speak. She's got some ideas that I think you need to hear. I'll be here for any other questions, or if you have any questions right now, I'm happy to answer them.
We'll hear from the applicant.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I appreciate your time here tonight. I want to thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm a little bit nervous, so. My name is Josephine Bianchi, and my husband and I own the property at 10-421 Courthouse Road that we've been talking about. We own it under Bivio LLC. After four long years in this economy, we were fortunate enough to find a good tenant. There's very little they need to do inside. They need to paint, redo the floors, and change two doors. Outside, they are doing nothing. There's nothing that they need to do. Yet VDOT, and I'm sorry, the planning staff is also asking us to spend tens of thousands of dollars to install sidewalk on the Courthouse Road side in front of our property that belongs to VDOT. The property belongs to VDOT. It is not reasonable, they are, that they are taking away our ability to move forward with this, with this contingency for improvements on VDOT's property. There's no other sidewalk on our side of Courthouse Road from Levels to Beckenridge. In the master plan for Courthouse Road, at some point, it will be altered, and the sidewalk will have to be torn out and redone. The expense is too great, and it is not justified. The planning commission can recommend the special use permit without the sidewalk. We are asking you to do that. We feel our property rights are being infringed upon by excessive regulations by VDOT, and we are requesting this, requesting that you spare us this undue expense. In addition, VDOT is recommending that we not get a special use permit unless we close one of the entrances. A commercial entrance, as you know, that permit is of value, but the approval is very valuable, and the commercial entrance is an expensive improvement. VDOT is recommending that the taking of our entrance without compensation, that's not fair. The cost would be a hardship to our prospective tenants. There is no business justification for such an expense. To use Mr. Yakubowski's words when I met with him on September 20th, "VDOT wants you to pay to devaluate your own property." We met with Mr. Skinner and Mr. Beal from VDOT. Mr. Skinner and I were both shocked to find that if we close one of the entrances, it will be closed permanently. It will never be available to a future tenant. Even if future business prospects find that entrance a necessity, it will no longer be available. We are willing, if it is so important to VDOT, that cars not go in and out of that entrance closest to Levels while this is a car lot, to accept a condition that would require the car lot to display vehicles for sale on that one entrance in order to keep it blocked in that manner. County staff put in their report that leaving the entrance open might cause a traffic hazard resulting from conflict, as Patrick so eloquently explained. Okay, this entrance was rebuilt by VDOT not too long ago when they did the road improvement. They used their safety standards. They felt that it was safe, and it was with VDOT's approval for this entrance since they built it. According to, this was maybe about seven or eight years ago that they did this. According to VDOT, these are the following accidents that have happened on our corner on Levels Road, the four corners, from January 1st, 2013 to September of 2016. During this timeframe, there were six crashes associated with traffic northbound on Levels on this side where 7-Eleven is. On August of 2013, two cars northbound turned left on Courthouse Road, sideswiped. On 10-13, northbound, two through cars, westbound, 208, under police control. On 2-14, cars turning right out of 7-Eleven onto Levels hit a car on Levels. On 2-14, cars turned left out of Levels, hit by an eastbound car on Courthouse that ran the red light. On 5-14, northbound, rear-end crash approaching the signal at Courthouse. None of these were due or around any of our entrances. Mrs. Carter expressed concern over, about traffic on Courthouse Road being increased by a recent business application. I watched the video on, so. To this issue, please consider that our property becoming a car dealership will cut trip generation to and from the property from 350 cars a day, trips per day, to 106 trips per day. That's an improvement, that's, that's approving our special use permit will cut trip generation to our site by 70%. I spoke with one of the commissioners last week, and he shared with me that one of the concerns the commissioners might have would be the appearance and the maintenance of the car dealership. My husband and I had the same concerns before we started negotiating with them. My husband and I invested our retirement in this property in Spotsylvania. We as landlords want to protect our property. We are more concerned about what goes on there and how it looks than you are. It is to our benefit to keep the property looking as nice as possible because we still own the property. And we have made a condition on the lease that they need to maintain it. If they don't maintain the property, we will hire a company to do so. But we are confident that they will be a good addition to the business neighborhood. Another concern was the sign. The sign will stay as-is, the big front sign that's in, it's been there since Hys was there. When they want to change the sign and put in a new sign, okay, they will get the proper permits and do whatever the code requires. The other concerns were car repair and maintenance on that property. No vehicles will be restored for scrap or parts on this property. There will be no vehicle repair done on the property, no car wash or maintenance of any kind. Cars for sale will be driven in as opposed to being trailered in. The amount of cars in the lot will not exceed what is allowed by code. This property was a restaurant for only eight years. Prior to that, it was a gas station, a Hys, a thrift store, and I've been told before that it was a garden center. I know for a fact that three of those uses never maintained their property as nicely as my husband and I keep it. But as one of the commissioners said, it looks like the property was laid out to be a car dealership. Our property has been empty without a tenant for more than four years. We have been more than responsible owners at significant expense. We've kept the property up and in good condition all the time, including regularly cutting all of VDOT's grass, seeding, weeding, mulching. Virtually 90% of our lawn, as you saw from that sketch, is VDOT property. We can't help wondering if this conversation might be going different if our building was boarded up, as it has been in the past before we owned it, covered with graffiti, sitting with two-feet-tall grass that VDOT mowed only twice a year. It is a negative advertisement for Spotsylvania County's economy to have one of the best corners be empty for so long. For those that are considering bringing business to Spotsylvania, it would have a negative impact to see that building boarded up with weeds and high grass all around it as they drive down the county seat.
Miss Meier, could you wrap it up, please?
Yes. We are, we are asking you to recommend that, that you recommend our special use permit, and we are asking you to keep our entrance open and that we not build a sidewalk. I thank you so much. As I said, I'm a little bit nervous, so if you have any questions for me, I'm...
You did a fine job. Any questions?
I have a question. You gave your talk. Did you not say that you were willing to keep, that, make sure that cars stay parked in that entrance? Did you say that?
Yes. They can, they, I can ask them, I can add it to the lease, that they park cars on one of the entrances so it remains closed while they lease the space. Once they lease this, they, you know, God only knows when it's going to happen, but our lease is only for seven years. In seven years, if they decide not to stay, or we ask them not to stay, that entrance becomes available for another tenant that might need it.
Thank you.
May I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
I want to say thank you. Yes, you all have kept that property immaculate, and it certainly is an asset to the county.
Thank you.
And we do appreciate that.
Any other questions, comments? Mike?
I had a question for, yes, more for the applicant Auto's Direct. Met with them this week, also had a chance to meet with you on property and your husband this weekend. And one of the concerns that I had was what we're seeing throughout the county. So it's not only this location, but throughout the county with dealerships, auto dealerships, is that, you know, infringing, coming right up close to the road, infringing on the ability to move through side roads and things of that nature throughout the county. And again, it's not, it's not this applicant, it's across the county and other uses. What I like in this application is the fact that the, there's no ability for you to do that, right? The existing shrubbery is going to remain in place, the curbs are going to remain in place. And I'm hoping that this will be an example of how a used car dealership should look and how it should have, you know, its appearance kept up and not overcrowded with the ability for a customer to come in and park somewhere as opposed to parking a fire lane and have the vehicles there in appropriate manner. And so with that, I wanted to ask the applicant, it's part of the intent to have this, is to help generate that and kind of be an example for other dealerships in the area when it comes to the ability for you to have a lot that you can move throughout pretty easily and not be overcrowded and not be on the grass and not be in areas where vehicles shouldn't be.
Well, I can only speak for my property, for our property. There is landscape there, and there's landscape, they can't run over the landscape. And the, the display area is very easy for anyone even on the street to see what's there and what's for sale. I see in a lot of car lots, they bring them very close because they have a narrow lot and their cars are, from my own business experience for almost 50 years, they have a narrow lot and their cars or their display area is way in the back. They want to entice people in. Our property is right there. You've got it. It's visible from everywhere. So I don't think we'll have that problem on our property.
And then if I may, I have a question for Patrick. Two things. First of all, for the sidewalk, if the sidewalk were to be, to go in, what was the long-term plans for that intersection for VDOT? Would that eventually have to come out as the applicant has mentioned or the owner had mentioned? What is the plan? The plan is to go three lanes in both directions for 208 eventually, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
As far as whether or not there's a design for that roadway segment, I don't believe there is one yet.
There is no plan, just a long-term plan.
Okay.
But no, no design.
And the second question I have was about the .3-foot candles. I have no idea what that is. I know it's a brightness, it's based on something. Do we have any county ability to measure that, or are we dependent on?
Yes, we, we do have the technology to measure that.
Okay.
The, but the way that code is drafted is to basically require that the sign itself have the technology to measure that and auto-adjust itself.
Okay.
But if we had to double-check them, we could double-check them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm a little confused. Are we always putting sidewalks on VDOT's property?
Not necessarily, although that is the preferred place to put them.
Why?
Well, for, for the applicant, then VDOT maintains it, and for...
But they ought to put them in.
I couldn't agree with you more.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
It's more of a rhetorical question, I guess. Yeah.
Any other questions or comments at this point? Thank you.
Thank you so much for this opportunity.
All right. Anybody signed up to speak on this? Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak on this application? I will open and close a public hearing then, and if, I do have one question for the engineer, though. Is there an opportunity to perhaps do a little bit of restriping for that weave to make it more safe, or?
Here's a, here's a, here's a good point. That, that right turn lane from the corner is 200 feet long, which is a standard turn lane length. So that's not an extraordinarily short, it's not cutting anything short. That's designed to accommodate that kind of weaving motion. It's obviously a stripe, if you, if you look at it, Google Earth's a wonderful thing, but if you look at it, it is striped very cleanly. very cleanly to keep a separate right turn lane for both entrances. And the three lanes are well-stripped. It was a VDOT-designed entrance and intersection. You can look at it, it's accommodating VDOT standards completely. So the answer is, could we restripe it? You could add some, you could restripe it just to make the stripes appear more bold, but it's striped in accordance with the requirements and the lanes of a length that would accommodate the weaving motions.
Okay, very well. Thank you. I appreciate that. Any other questions or comments at this point? Hearing done, I'll take a motion on the application.
Yes, I'd like to motion to approve removing the first condition of both the sidewalk needing to be constructed as well as the closing of the second entrance on levels. I'd like to remove that and have two and three conditions remain.
Have a second. The motion is clear. With that, I'll call the vote. It is unanimous with the revised conditions in the motion, so thank you very much. Moving on to the next application, SUP-16-08.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This next case is SUP-16-8. Get it running. The applicant, Stephen Smith, on behalf of Antioch Plan Developers, requests special use approval for an assisted living facility to allow a two-story, one-hundred-ten-bed facility in a rural zoning district. The property is located on a portion of 11120 Gordon Road, Tax Parcel 21A83, within the chancellor voting district. The project is proposed on an eight-point-two-nine-acre portion of a sixty-nine-point-five-acre tract owned by the Salem Fields Community Church. Staff is recommending approval with conditions. The subject property itself is at the southwest corner of the intersection of Gordon Road and Rubicon Crossing. Rubicon Crossing being a private road extending west from the intersection of Gordon Road and Salem Fields Boulevard. The southwest corner of this intersection is occupied by the Salem Fields Community Church. The proposed development site itself sits behind the church in a recessed area located between the church and the existing Dominion Power substation. The property is zoned RU, as are all surrounding properties, has a future land use designation of institutional, as do abutting properties to northwest and south, and a residential neighborhood called the Nye River Landing is located to the east, with the closest home approximately two-hundred-and-twenty-three feet to the east. The site is proposed to be improved with a one-to-two-story assisted living facility. The shaded portions on your screen indicate the portions of the building that will be two stories tall. The ALF is proposed to have a room for one-hundred-and-ten beds, forty of which will be in a restricted-access memory care wing on the west, which is kind of surround, there's a courtyard in the middle of that wing. A little bit more on that in a moment. There are sixty-eight parking spaces proposed in three different zones. I've labeled them A, B, and C on the image before you. And the development will occur on this eight-point-three-acre site, leaving sixty-one acres still in church ownership. Approximately twenty-five developable acreage, excuse me, acres remain to the north and eighteen to the south of the ALF. So the site is connected to Gordon Road via that existing private roadway, a loop road, there's the private roadway runs along here and connects to Gordon Road, east off-screen. A loop road is proposed around the facility and will also provide access to the south for the hypothetical development of the church's property located further to the south. The applicant has proposed to retain the existing landscaping east of the subject site. It's about a forty-to-forty-five-foot-wide existing tree buffer there in lieu of clearing it and replanting a transitional screen too as required. Staff has proposed the condition that this buffer be maintained at a minimum of forty feet wide. Additionally, they have proposed a street buffer be along the northern road frontage. The applicant has requested to not install a buffer on the south side of the project adjacent to the remaining church property and has provided a letter from the church leadership approving that request. Lastly, the residents of the western memory care unit have their own outdoor access. It's via that interior landscape courtyard for their own safety and security. So I reviewed this case in accordance with our special use standards of review and the comprehensive plan and found that this case also increases the commercial tax base. It provides options for senior living and end-of-life care. It meets the special use standards of review and is generally consistent with the comp plan. I've received one letter of support from the church leadership. I've received one letter of opposition from a neighboring property owner, which I have provided to you tonight. The letter was generally focused on the potential of residents wandering off the premises into the neighborhood to the rear. It was also questioning the timing of the construction, disturbance that that can cause on the neighborhood. And lastly, whether the applicant had considered their property values with respect to them being able to see this facility when they're outside at their home. So staff has recommended approval with the standard binding of the GDP condition and with a requirement that the tree buffer on the east side of the site should be preserved with a minimum width of forty feet. I will stand by for your questions. I know the applicant is present and has a presentation for you.
Can you go back to the site plan again?
I will, sir.
Patrick. Stormwater management pond is...
Far south.
And is that protected? Does that have a fence around it? Do you know if that has a fence around it? Will there be a fence around it?
I do not believe there was going to be a fence around it. In fact, the applicants had agreed to kind of landscape it to make it look nicer. I will, if you would like a fence around it, we can sort of...
Well, I'm just, from a safety standpoint, is there a possibility of a patient wandering into the stormwater management pond?
I will probably defer the question. However, I can state that the memory care unit is access-controlled.
Okay.
And the other residents that have the ability to leave the facility should be cognizant enough to not do that, but I'll let them discuss that further.
Very well. All right. Any questions for Patrick? You hear from the applicant?
Good evening. My name is Steve Smith. I'm with Antioch Plan Developers. We're developing the property in partnership with the church. We, if you have any questions, you commented about the possibility of the fence around the stormwater area. What we intended to do because of the vista that we have created from the facility, we're going to keep that stormwater detention area low and wide so that it's going to gradually slope down and we'll be able to mow it. We're not, it's not going to be a wet, correct me if I'm wrong.
Could be a dry pond.
It's going to be a dry pond, and we're going to landscape it because we really want to create, from the lobby area, the entire rear storefront is glassed, and so we're wanting to create a vista that looks out into the, that area plus beyond into the wooded area. So, so that's, and as far as the occupants is going to be on there, these are going to be a combination of assisted living folks and memory care. And the memory care would be the only one that would be locked down for security. So they're not going to be able to get outside of the facility. And the assisted living are going to be like people's moms and dads. So it's not, once you get to the point where you need some kind of a nursing treatment, they're not, we're not geared for that. It's not a skilled nursing. It's a assisted living for retired folks and the memory care wing. Anything else? Well, I'll show you what this, the presentation is, you see up here, I don't have a click or so. This is actually the image of the church, the existing church. I'm not going to go through all the language there, but you want to just move on with that? And you can see on the aerial where generally we're going to be in relation to Gordon Road. And of course, our neighbor's going to be the housing, or the subdivision to our south and the, of course, the power station. Next one. And that's a close-up. That's the, that's the existing, and you can see the wooded buffer that is between us and the residential. I've not been in, I've not been on each one of the lots, but looking from our property toward the residential, it's really quite thick, the wooded area is. And of course, we're wanting to maintain that. And the way our property is dropped a little lower in elevation, in my opinion, I don't think there's going to be that much of a challenge with the neighbors as far as visual concerns. Next slide. And that's just, you've already seen that, that's the entire church property. And that's another site plan, which you've already seen that. And you can see the road is coming in, in the north side area there, and we're going to, that's going to access our property. And this is the floor plan, conceptual floor plan, actually a preliminary floor plan that shows the first floor. And on the first floor, we got a combination of assisted living and memory care. And you can see the, what we call the doughnut. That's deliberately designed that way because a lot of the memory care folks, they like to do a lot of walking. And so we created so they can continually walk around their neighborhood and visit other neighborhoods. When I say neighborhoods, that's internally. And then the open area, the patio area, that's going to all be landscaped as well. We'll have some arbers out there and places for folks to go out and visit. And it'll be open, so they'll always be able to know how the seasons are. That's important because if you're there for any length of time, obviously, you need to know, people need to know if it's spring or summer or winter or fall. So that's the first floor. Next slide. The second floor, it's, we had to move it around so that you could tell or get it on the sheet. But we put the assisted living as a two-story on the right, and then we went ahead and since we already had the memory care on the ground level, we came back and put assisted living on top of the memory care. So that's the second floor. Next. Now that's the architectural rendering is on the top of the sheet, and it's going to be more of the Georgian style here and trying to pick up the Virginia architecture. And the other two images are just that. It's just a representation of the character and quality we're going to create. Those are other facilities. Next. And that's just an enlarged drawing that shows where you're coming in from the portico share into the lobby and then going to the, mainly the support area there in the first level. Next. Now, I'm showing you this, this is the view that you have when you come in, the road, the existing church property up on this parking area, and you're looking back toward the, what I call the vista. And you can see in the distance there, the substation, but you can see we have some nice wooded area. And then the second, or the bottom part of the slide is another shot of the tree line between us and the residential. So you can see it's quite thick. And that's the view of the church, the existing church from Gordon Road. The reason I'm showing that is that essentially you will not see our facility, which I'm not too excited about that, but it's low in grade and it's behind the church. So from Gordon Road, you're not going to know we exist other than a sign. So I'm planning on a huge, large signs, sort of like those car dealerships. Not really. But, but you can see we're, it's basically the view that you see there is going to stay the same even once we're operating. Next. You can just flip on. That's just talking about the operators that we, we're going to have operating in. Go ahead. And these are just some images of some of the interior space. We're going to create a very quality space. You can flip on through those. That's just representation of where we're heading. That's the bistro. We're going to do something similar to that. And that's all I have.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
But anyway, that's, that's what we have.
Are you going to build this out in phases or is it going to be a...
No, it'll all be built at the same time. I mean, it's just phase one.
And you're utilizing the existing entrance off Gordon at the signalized intersection?
Correct.
Okay, very good. Any, any questions or comments for the applicant? Do we have anybody signed up to speak?
The operators, by the way, are, they're based not far from here. They're a Virginia group, in Virginia and Maryland.
Peter Getz signed up.
I'll, I'll open the public hearing. Come on up. You'll have three minutes. State your name and address. You'll have three minutes. If you represent an organization, you'll have five minutes. The little light on your podium will be green. When it turns to yellow, you'll have one minute. So when it turns to red, I'd appreciate if you wrap it up.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Peter Getz. I'm a resident of Spotsylvania, 6112 Thayer Street, Fox Point, which puts me in, I don't know, one of those districts.
Cortland.
Cortland, thank you. And I'm also a member of Salem Fields. Part of having breakfast with the pastor occasionally means that I get pointed the liaison with the development. So I'm here and I'm happy to speak on behalf of that. Three things I'd like to talk about real briefly. One, most of you probably have heard the statistic, the baby boomers are aging, and every day in America, ten thousand people turn sixty-five. Yesterday, ten thousand, today, ten thousand, tomorrow, ten thousand. So with the current timeline for this project and by the time it would open for business in another year and a half or so, five million more people will have turned sixty-five in America. And Spotsylvania's fair share portion of that is probably about a thousand people. So the next year and a half, about a thousand folks in Spotsylvania are going to turn sixty-five and et cetera. So there's a, there's a continuing need, an ongoing need for more quality senior housing to be built in Spotsy, in Stafford, all over. And this is just one project that's going to add to the available resources for folks as they age, as they decide they don't need that two-story building and they need a little bit of help. So I think this is a great thing to add to Spotsylvania for that purpose. In general, it's a need for us to be a community that continues to take care of our own. Number two, as a member of Salem Fields, we are serious about ministry. We're serious about ministry to the community. And as we, as this facility is built and those one-hundred-and-ten residents come in, they're going to have family, they're going to have friends, they're going to need support, and we love the opportunity to do more ministry. For those of you that are familiar with the church, we make that building available all the time to community groups all over the county, and that's just part of our outreach. And so we're excited about this partnership that we're going to have with Antioch. And third, as a resident of Spotsylvania, I love the idea of taking this roughly eight acres that's currently appropriately not taxed, putting it in a commercial status. It's going to have a value of roughly fifteen million dollars and with very, very, very little impact on county resources, it's going to bring in approximately one-hundred-and-thirty-thousand a year in increased tax revenue. And that's kind of, that's the low ball based on what it ends up being, you know, for market. But it's going to go from zero to about one-hundred-and-thirty-thousand a year in tax revenue. As a taxpayer, I think that's awesome. So for those three reasons and many others, I strongly support this project. Thank you.
Anyone else? Very well. I'll, uh, close the public hearing. Um, this is in, I believe this is in my district, correct? It's in my district? Um, this is the exact type of, um, uh, development that I love to see and encourage, and I agree completely. It's, it's a much-needed service for this community. And I'm thrilled, and I think it's a great use of the property and a great location. Um, I, I do have one question, though. How many jobs, uh, fu- uh, full-time jobs is this gonna create?
Well, that's, I'd have to get the exact number from the operators, but, um, I believe it's somewhere in the neighborhood of thirty or forty, something like that.
Yeah, thank you. And, and again, it's, it's good-paying job, so, um, with, with, with that, I am, I am very pleased to, uh, uh, move that we accept the, um, the app, the application.
Second.
I'll call the vote. That includes the conditions. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you very much. That's unanimous. We appreciate that. Moving on to the next application, SUP sixteen dash triple zero nine, Royal Farms, Patrick?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you mentioned, this is the last case I'll be presenting to you this evening. It is SUP sixteen nine. It is for Royal Farms. The applicant is Sumner Partners, and they are requesting a special use for a twenty-four pump fuel dispensing station and a convenience store called Royal Farms. The property is located on a portion of one-two-one-zero-zero-Chancellor's Village Lane. Its tax parcel, twenty-two fourteen D, within the Cortland Voting District, is in front of the Chancellor's Village Assisted Living Facility. The project is proposed on a two-point-zero-seven acre portion of a three-point-three acre tract owned by Metacorp Properties Incorporated. Staffs are recommending approval with conditions. Uh, as I mentioned, it's at the southeast corner of the intersection of Plank Road, uh, or Route Three and Colarney Drive, in front of the existing Chancellor's Village, uh, ALF. The intersection of Plank Road and Gordon Road is approximately point-six-five miles to the west. The subject SUP is requested only on the western portion of the subject lot. The subject property and those located northwest and east have a future land use designation of commercial. The Chancellor's Village project has a FLU, or future land use designation, of high-density residential. All surrounding properties are zoned C-two. Uh, lastly, the property is within the primary development boundary and the highway corridor overlay district. The full parcel is proposed to be bisected by a proposed private road, A. This new private road divides the subject parcel and leaves a one-point-two acre remainder to the east. Both of these parcels will share access onto this private roadway. The subject site is proposed to be improved with, as I mentioned, a twenty-four pump fueling station and a five-thousand-three-hundred-seventy-square-foot convenience store. The proposed use is estimated to generate approximately one-thousand-six-hundred-eighty new trips a day, but is also expected to attract, uh, two-thousand-eight-hundred-sixty-one stops of convenience, or pass-by trips. The development of the site includes mitigation of an existing onsite stream bisecting the property, and the applicants are permitting this effort through the Army Corps of Engineers and DEQ. So, there are multiple accesses proposed for the site. Firstly, there's a traffic light available to the intersection of, uh, Plank Road and Chancellor's Village Lane. I've identified it with a little symbol on your screen. Uh, so, westbound Plank Road travelers will likely use this light to access the property, turn right on Healthcare Center Lane, and then right onto the new private road, finally entering the site. Eastbound Plank Road travelers may make a right from Colarney, or the new private road, or lastly, Chancellor's Village. Each of these roads provides easy access to the proposed project. While these accesses are certainly great for the future business, I must note that the proposed private road's access on Plank Road, although shared, is nonetheless another curb cut on the Plank Road and has been opposed by county transportation staff in effort to reduce the access points onto Route Three, improving the efficiency and safety of the roadway. The site lies just outside of the recently completed access management study, uh, which had its western terminus at Gordon Road. However, the reduction of access points on route theory has remained a concerted effort by, uh, county planning and transportation staff in the spirit of good transportation planning. The proposed private road connection has been approved by VDOT, being an ax- uh, via an access management exception. They are comfortable with the location and have agreed to permit that private road, A, where it is. So, let's talk more about the site. The applicants have provided, uh, multiple pedestrian access points, including sidewalks along Colarney Drive, Healthcare Center Lane, and along the east side of private road, A. Two pedestrian paths are also proposed in the opposite corners. I'm gonna depict them with my mouth here. There's one, and here's a second one. To improve, uh, accessibility, uh, for anyone walking along Route Three, or probably more likely, walking from Chancellor's Village Assisted Living Facility to the south. The applicant has also proposed buffer plannings and landscaping, um, including, uh, they've proposed to have, uh, wider trees, rather than, um, just planting extra trees, uh, in order to satisfy the H-Cod requirements. So, they're gonna look better at the time the site's ready. They'll be taller and wider. Lastly, they've included an artistic rendering in their GDP that they'll commit to. Uh, I'm picturing this for you now. The front elevation's on the top, the rear elevation's on the bottom. The view from private road, A, is on the left, and the view from Colarney Drive is on the right. So, staff reviewed this project in accordance with our county codes and our comprehensive plan, found that it increases the commercial tax base of the county, it improves an undeveloped commercial property along a major arterial roadway, it satisfies the special year standards of review, and is consistent with the relevant policies of the comp plan. Lastly, although opposed by county transportation staff, the right-in, right-out connection to Plank Road has been approved by VDOT, will remain a joint access and provide access to both of these properties and the remainder of the properties further to the south. So, staff's recommending approval with two conditions. First, the general binding of the GDP condition you're all familiar with, and secondly, the LED sign condition that was previously presented to you tonight. Should the applicants desire an LED sign, it should have the ability to auto dim, uh, as depicted. I will stand by for any of your questions, and I know, and I know the applicants are here to speak.
Uh, I just had the one question. You said that the county transportation staff is, uh, opposed to the private, the private road intersect, uh, divides the property? That's not a condition, right?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one.
Yes, ma'am.
Go back to the, uh, landscaping, please. Well, just keep on going. Did the, I want to call it, uh, what?
Uh, oh, the, the drawings of the building?
Yes.
Yes.
Now, go back. I thought you still had another one. Go back one. Go back another one. Another one? All right, there we go. This is okay. How much landscaping do you have there? Is my concern has always been that we have landscaping, that we sometimes over-landscape, that prohibits, uh, people, when they are going in and out of the entrances, they cannot see, and then their, the landscaping becomes also too large, too tall, that you can't even see the building? How much of this is land?
Um, we certainly hope that we won't obstruct the view of the building. Um, otherwise, the applicants have actually proposed a pretty generous, uh, landscaping plan. They've, uh, provided the required, uh, street buffers and have made those, uh, those, they've, they're gonna plant larger trees at the time of planting, uh, on those buffers. Uh, we've certainly tried to keep all of our sightlines open for, for vehicles to see.
Yeah, the, we, we talked about this a lot, Patrick, that one, one of the concerns, and I think Ms. Carr's alluding to it, is the sight distances, that this landscaping's impacting sight distances, um, when you're at a stop location. Uh, and we've got some really dangerous intersections here because of the landscaping, so whether or not it's depicted here, or it's in the plan review process, I guess, uh, that's something that we would like to make sure we pay attention to. Any other questions?
And I wanna pay attention to, if you don't mind. I don't like to go to a gas station where there's trees and nobody can see me. I like view. You know, if I'm at that station, and as a lady, I'm there alone, and maybe, and putting in the gas, and there's no view for me. I mean, you know, nobody can, I'm, I'm just covered, you know, with, uh, landscaping. And I, I like landscaping. Please don't take me, uh, wrong on that, but I, I think that we should have, um, some landscaping that's not going to, uh, have, that it wouldn't be us, it would, it would come in as a safety issue. That's what I'm looking at.
Well, um, we do route these through the police department. The police department frequently has SEPTED-related concerns regarding, um, how landscaping should be trimmed or preserved, uh, to basically improve visibility. Um, I'm, I'm trying to formulate a condition in my, in my mind for you, and I'm having a har- hard time coming up with one on the fly. Did you, did you, did you have something specific in mind that we could, we could?
Well, I, I, again, Patrick, I think it's when we go through the site plan process, and we'll leave that to you folks to do, but a special eye on landscaping, sight distance safety, and even to, to your point, lighting, um, because Ms. Carr's got a very good point there. Um, I, I don't think there's a special condition we need on the application, but again, we'll be looking for, you know, um, a lan- an appropriate landscaping plan that doesn't impede safety.
Uh, if you would allow me, I, I'll give you a perfect example. Route One, uh, the wah-wah there, it's so many trees that are there, that you can't even see the building. Much less if I'm standing there pumping gas, and somebody would try to be dangerous to me. Uh, it's, it's just not good. That's, that's what I'm looking at.
The, the one on mine?
No.
I'm sorry, the one on Harrison?
Yes, Harrison.
Harrison.
And Route One, yes, absolutely. The trees are pretty, but I'm not in a forest. I'm at a service station.
They got a gas station.
Yeah, a gas station.
Yep.
If I may, I've made this statement before. Somebody's gonna hear me sooner or later. When you go down Bragg Road extended by the mall, where the Good Wood Store is.
Yes, sir.
On the right, they took out all that you could not see from the parking lot. When you come out of the parking lot, the traffic on Bragg Road extended. There is no, the lane goes right to the curbing. There's no shoulder there. And cars have to pull half the front of the car out into the street to see around the shrubbery. Well, a year or so ago, they tore all that trash out of there, and I was happy. Come back through there two days later, and they're planting the same stuff that's head-level when you're sitting in the car, and they still have to pull out in the street. I've almost hit four cars in there in the last three years, because they pull out in the street and they'll see you coming, but they won't back up. When you've got cars going alongside you, and that guy's sitting there, it's a dangerous situation. So, I agree with overdoing the, uh, shrubbery. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have this as a policy, or what, I mean, is, do we need to change something so that we can cut down on these things? Or do you all have the ability to do that?
Yes, we, we have standards within the design standards manual related to sight distance, and, and, um, we probably need to beef up portions of it related to the SEPTED, as Patrick was mentioning. Uh, we do have a sheriff's office, um, representative that comes to our technical review committee meetings, and he points out situations that he sees might be an issue. Uh, but, but it is something that, um, we'll need to revisit in our design standards manual update.
I think that's a good idea, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, fair enough. I, I agree. Anything else for Patrick? We'll hear from the applicant.
Mr. Chairman, planning commissioners, and staff, my name is Deborah Ray Carnes. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Lemming and Healy, and I am here representing the property owner and Royal Farms. I want to thank the planning staff who went over and above to schedule meetings with us and answer all questions. The, the applicants were very impressed, and I wanted to let you guys know that. Uh, as you heard staff explain, this is a buy-right convenience store with, um, a fuel service station, and it is compatible with the existing zoning, the existing comprehensive plan, and the surrounding neighborhood. Uh, you have, uh, um, a proffered GDP, which includes proffered design standards. And I just wanted to take a minute to explain Royal Farms to you, because they are new to this area of the state. Um, Royal Farms started in, um, the Delmarver area. Um, they have approximately a hundred and sixty-three stores in Maryland, Delaware, and Pennsylvania, and are starting to build in the northern Virginia area. There is a store right now, um, in construction on Warrenton Road in Stafford. They emphasize the convenience store portion, and they are known for their fried chicken, which I've heard several people state is memorable. They're looking forward to the economic opportunity to come to Spotsylvania. Um, they will have approximately forty-five employees, um, and they're noted for their architecture. While you were discussing this case, the engineering team, uh, sitting in the back, was listening avidly to your comments on landscaping and sight distance, and they feel convinced that they can meet any and all of your concerns during the site planning process. Um, uh, Jeff Bainbridge of Royal Farms is here, if you would like any further detail. But otherwise, uh, I'm here to request action tonight on this case and, uh, answer any other questions you have.
Any questions for the applicant?
No, I would just like to say, the one on Warrenton Road is coming along, and when I looked at the sign, I said, what is Royal Farms? Thank you for coming to the area. I'm looking forward to the chicken.
Any other questions? I will, uh, open the public hearing. Um, I don't know if we have anybody signed up, Paul, for this application? Any in the public that, uh, wishes to speak? I don't think so. So, we'll close the public hearing. Um, I don't know if the applicant has anything else they wanna add at this point, uh, but if there are no questions or comments, I can take a motion on this application.
Uh, please, Chair, I move that we accept this applicant's request with the, uh, two conditions the staff has recommended.
I will call the vote. That is unanimous. Um, thank you very much. Patrick, are you done for the evening?
I am, sir.
Very good.
The same to you. Have a blessed one.
Under, uh, new business, any new business for this evening?
No.
Uh, I presume there's no other public comment? Uh, before we adjourn, I would like to say to the commissioners, um, I appreciate everybody's effort this year. Uh, this is our last meeting before the end of the year, I believe, and, um, I do appreciate your efforts. Uh, I know it's a lot of hard work, and, um, I recognize that. So, thank you very much. And I do wish every, everybody a very Merry Christmas and enjoy your families. Uh, with that, if there are no other comments, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
I'll call the vote, please. That's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Your, your envelopes are here. You can fill them out right now.